I would like to call the meeting, this meeting, the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting, the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of Prince William County Public Schools and discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
It is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, a motion is in order. Moving the motion, moving.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with Division Council and staff the contracts, performance evaluation, deployment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, employees, and appointees under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to receive information and discuss with Division Council and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. Three, to receive advice and information from legal counsel and staff regarding the acquisition and disposition of real property for school sites where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board and to discuss the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly, public initially, the financial interest of the school board would be adversely affected under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3, 6, 7, and 8. Four, to consult with Division Council and staff regarding retention of legal counsel for collective bargaining issues and legally required procedures necessary to obtain additional funding under the American Rescue Plan Act for elementary and secondary school emergency relief under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. And five, to discuss the qualifications and selection of the student representatives to the school board for the 2021-22 school year under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Oh, Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
At this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session. Return in approximately one hour. One hour. Thank you. All right. All right. Well, thank you. The Prince William County School Board is now returning the open session from closed session. Moving on to a closed session certification, a motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, that the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of July 2, 2021 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Great. Moving on to the closed session action items, a motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second? Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jessie seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Great. Moving on to the closed session action items, a motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second? Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jessie seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the approval of appointments and releases, a recommendation, a motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur. Did I do that one? Yeah, 9:02, 9:02. Sorry about that. Retention of outside counsel. Go for it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize Division Council to retain the services of Cynthia Hudson Esquire and the law firm of Sands Anderson to provide the school board and superintendent with legal guidance and advice regarding the collective bargaining legislation that became effective May 1, 2021.
Do you have a second? Ms. Williams.
A second.
Ms. Williams seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
And the vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. That's the end of action items, right? Okay. Moving on now to the public meeting, I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of this meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. At this time, we'll do stand for the pledge. If, Ashley, you want to lead us in the pledge here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a little bit of housekeeping here. This is our students' last meeting for the year, our student members. They will be walking down the aisle for commencement this weekend and early next week. And so, from the school board, we wish them the very best and congratulations. We want to take a few moments to recognize our student representatives and thank them for their time and dedication. So first, I'd like to, if you please stand, Mr. Ben Kim of Unity Reed High School. Ben, keep standing there, Ben, keep standing. Ben has served on this board two years and has been with us through some of the most difficult, challenging times this school board and school system have ever faced. And Ben has provided this school board with enormous communications with students by survey over the course of two years, statistical analysis of where the students are, and really did a great job in representing all the students across the entire division. And, you know, and whether it was during last year's social unrest or this year's pandemic, Ben has always been there sort of addressing the needs of our students. And this board cannot thank him enough. And we wish him all the best as he attends University of Virginia in the fall. Is that correct, Ben? Did I get that right? Right. And we know wherever you go, you're going to make Prince William County proud. Thank you very much, Mr. Kim. Next, we have Caroline Silveira from Hilton High School. Please stand, Ms. Silveira. Ms. Silveira is from Hilton High School and served as a member of this board this year, has been with us, really representing the, representing her students very well. She communicates well with our student senate, works very closely with them, has on more than one occasion come up here to speak about the mental health of our students, advocating for students and their testing, worked with the student senate to advocate for students on AP exams, has been there as a model for how our student members communicate to be able to then tell us what the students really feel. And, yeah, and our English learner students, and Caroline speaks Spanish, and provides us, you know, outstanding service throughout the year. And this board could not have done what it was able to do this year without hearing from her through the pandemic on some of the most important issues affecting students today. She will also be attending University of Virginia in the fall. She's a member, she's part of our Sizzle program at Hilton, is that correct? And so, we're also very proud in Caroline. We know you're going to go and represent Prince William County very well and, you know, really represent our region very well. And we wish you all the best and success in the future. We have this for you as well. Thank you. Give her a round of applause. Caroline, this one's yours. I'm sorry. Ben, did I give you yours? They're all the same. Well, here. Sorry about that. All right. And then next, we have Ashley Manavar. Ashley, please stand. Ashley was also one of our student representatives. She was the alternate to the student, to the board, but participated up here on the dais a number of times, has advocated strongly for her students, for her constituents, also on mental health issues, also on, and really on behalf of our teachers, too. You know, I think it's really important to remember that these student members throughout the pandemic spoke very emotionally, very strongly on behalf of protecting the students, protecting our teachers, protecting our staff. They never failed one time to let the board know where they stood on that. They did not fear. And Ashley really led on that as well. And so, this board truly appreciates it. We could not have done what we did this year without you all, and especially you, Ashley. And so, Ashley will be attending New York University in the fall, and we are very excited. And we know she's going to make a huge name for Prince William County out there in the Big Apple. Isn't that right, Ashley? Very good. Congratulations, Ashley. I think if we just have a minute and the public will bear with us, we'll come down here and take a picture with our students, if you don't mind. Well, I think speaking on behalf of the entire board, one of the most enjoyable experiences, one of the great perks of being on this board is working with our students. And so, again, thank you all very much and what you've done for our school division in this year that you will always remember and hopefully write about and tell the world about what you were able to do to help us get through this. So, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Ms. Zargarpur, a motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams seconds.
It was Diane.
Oh, Ms. Ralston, yeah. Ms. Ralston.
That's okay. That's okay.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Excellent. Ms. Ralston votes yes. Great.
And the vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we'll move on to citizen comment time. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and the legal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through electronic means unlike other public bodies, meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussion at this meeting by board members, staff, and citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on the agenda item for two minutes when the board is able to resume regular meetings without virtual participation, without the virtual participation permitted during state emergency. Expanded citizen comment will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. In the interim, citizen comment time has been reinstated on a limited basis in order to allow public comment both in person and through electronic means during the state of emergency. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments by email to the clerk who will share them with the school board. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with the school board clerk no later than 4:00 PM today, Wednesday, June 2, may address the school board in person or virtually about matters relating to the June 2, 2021 agenda items. There are three speakers signed up to speak in person tonight and two speakers to sign up virtually. Citizens are reminded that if they are not speaking on a specific agenda item for this weekend, this evening's meetings, they will be asked to step down. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium or speaking virtually. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please state your name and address for the record. Our first, we'll go with the in-persons first, we have Ms. Tiziana Botino. She's live, right? She's one of my live ones. Okay. Moving on, Sandra Kern.
I am back and I am live. Good evening, I'm Sandra Kern. I'm a proud parent of the Potomac District. I come before the board to say the 23 pages noted in the changes of the 39-page code of behavior needs to be addressed and questioned by this elected board. My concerns fall in the many changes that talk more of the logistics and less of the basics. When a child's needs are not being met, behaviors come to light. And the students marked a behavior issue. We need the inclusion lens clarified. A child that falls behind is everyone's concern. You are accountable to all 90,000 of them. My concern for the sped students that go through an MDR for discipline in this code change focusing on the legal, not general term, responsibility is a true equity lens. Changes happen, we have to be updated and be conscious of the effects. The changes, obviously, from pen to paper, to all digital or virtual, we have all experienced with positives and negatives. But we must be prepared. Technology is a great skill, but social skills are so important. I hope this board opens up the questions and dialogues for parents, guardians, students to understand more and not just hurt us through next year's "Sign it for the new year." I also welcome stakeholders to join in the hundreds of our schools' PTA groups and the special education PTA that's creating the families as partners, as sprinkled through the behavior, code of behavior. Thank you, Ms. Heebner, for all your hard work there. Second topic of sustainability, I make noise as a mom when I have concerns. I am all about education and environment, two passions. I'm glad to see the innovation of environmental literacy being placed in directives for our students and schools. I hope that what I advocate and preach for is fruition for the future of our children. And as always, reading is a life skill, and I thank you all.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Stevens will do the virtual citizen comments. You can take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker is Arya Bahari. I think this is you. I just have a phone number listed here. Should be able to unmute yourself. Is that phone in? Sometimes we have issues with the phone in. Our next speaker is Myra Shepherd. You can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Myra Shepherd. I just want to thank the school board for your work on environmental sustainability. I appreciate what you do. And I just want to ask that you also include specific language for the net zero buildings and the sustainable policy that you'll be voting on and to also add, you know, strong, the specific language, you know, where possible, and ambitious language, you know, for, sorry, I was calling my son. You know, for the future, we see in like laws and legislation and things like, you know, the strong language and saying like, "We shall and we will," you know, it seems to be what holds up. So, I just wanted to add that. But again, thank you so much for what you're doing for our children and for our future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will try that phone in one more time. Arya Bahari?
She, Arya said she muted herself. And if you could come, she's, I guess she's trying to speak.
All right, let me, okay, try it one more time, please. It's showing up still muted. It's unmuted. There we go.
Hello?
Okay, hi, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to echo what Myra just said. My name is Arya, volunteer with the Greater Prince William County Climate Action Network. I just want to thank the school board for prioritizing these sustainability initiatives. And I'm really hopeful and excited about the future of Prince William County schools and our youth. I also would like to ask that you all include net zero specific language in the sustainability proposal item that pertains to infrastructure. This language would forge a commitment to minimizing carbon emissions in our county, which, as you all know, is important to mitigating climate change's effects. And again, I just want to say thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's all we had.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Stevens. Next, we're moving on to 1501, revisions to the 2021-22 code of behavior. Ms. Heebner, this is on for information this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chair Zargarpur, members of the school board, and Superintendent Waltz. I'm pleased to be here this evening with some members of my team, the amazing Dara Duggar, who's our Director of OSMAP, and Dana Scanlon, who is our Title IX Coordinator and Student Equity Officer. I'd also like to recognize Becca Slater, who could not be with us tonight but was an important part of the team. So, before I hand the presentation over to Ms. Scanlon and Ms. Duggar, I want to just talk a little bit about our vision for the code of behavior in Prince William County schools. So, the goal of discipline is to create a safe and effective learning environment for students, free of disruption, so that kids can focus and feel safe as they're in school. We recognize that students are going to make mistakes, that we have to teach behavior, and sometimes we have to reteach behavior. In order for the code of behavior to be effective, we need it to be clear, clearly communicate expectations, and taught and practiced across all settings. So, this is a situation where we want equity in our buildings, we want it to be consistently implemented, and we need to make sure that our administrators are communicating that and, excuse me, I'm going to cough, and reinforcing that behavior. So, ultimately, we want to shape behavior to avoid negative, social and academic outcomes, and work to provide supports for our students and interventions so that our students can reach their fullest potential. So, it's not about punishment, it's about support and intervention. And at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Scanlon or Ms. Duggar. Ms. Duggar's going to go first.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, Vice Chairman Ms. Zargarpur, members of the school board, and Dr. Waltz. I am honored to present the recommended revisions to the 2021-22 code of behavior for your consideration. Next slide, please. The Code of Behavior Revisions Committee is composed of administrators and teachers at all levels, central office staff, counselors, parents, students, and Prince William County Public Schools Division Council. Revisions for the 2021-22 school year were led by the Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs in collaboration with the Office of Student Services and the Title IX and Student Equity Office. The task of the revisions committee is to review the code of behavior for suggested edits. This year, revisions included the use of an equity lens, conversations on reducing bias and harassment and enforcing the student code of conduct, and incorporating new policies and regulations governing Title IX. Recommendations and revisions for the committee were discussed and approved by the superintendent staff and division council. Next slide, please. In reviewing the code of behavior through a lens of equity, the committee identified the following revisions for the 2021-22 school year. Revisions that reflect families as partners, recognizing the need in partnering with families in making schools safe, effective learning environments, and in promoting social emotional development of children. Revisions reflecting language that is inclusive of all students. Revisions which incorporate forthcoming updates from the Virginia Department of Education's guidelines and model guidance on dress code and grooming, which are based on the health and safety of inclusive community. Additionally, the revisions to an equity lens require edits to the appeal procedures and timelines to ensure clarity to schools, staff, students, and parents and guardians. Mrs. Dana Scanlon, the new Title IX Coordinator, will present the revisions related to Title IX and student equity.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairwoman Zargarpur, members of the school board, and Superintendent Waltz. I'm very happy to be here with you tonight to discuss proposed revisions to the code of conduct that are specifically related to complaints of discrimination or harassment. These proposed revisions have been made in order to ensure that the Prince William County Public Schools Code of Behavior is in alignment with U.S. Department of Education Title IX regulations that went into effect in August 2020, and also with new court decisions and legislative action taken by the General Assembly. In particular, we have defined or redefined certain terminology, for example, the term sexual harassment itself, in order to comply with the requirements of new Title IX regulations. We have also revised our definitions of discrimination and harassment to reflect that prohibited bases for discrimination now include gender identity, sexual orientation, and lactation. In addition, the sections of the code of behavior that are specific to allegations of discrimination or harassment have been revised in order to ensure that there is no conflict between what is printed in our code of behavior and the federal Title IX grievance process by which all complaints of sexual harassment must now be investigated and resolved. Finally, the document provides information regarding how parents and students can report discrimination and harassment, and also provides some information regarding how to prevent such misconduct with an emphasis on open communication between students and trusted adults. Thank you. I'll turn this back over to Ms. Duggar.
Next slide, please. Revisions related to the 2021 General Assembly Session and Student Services are as follows. House Bill 1940 permits one school day long excused absence per school year for any middle school or high school student in the local school division who is absent from school to engage in civic or political event, and may permit additional excused absences for such students who are absent for such purposes. Virginia Code now includes a definition for dress and grooming. Dress and grooming code means any practice, policy, or portion of a code of student conduct adopted by a school board that governs or restricts the attire, appearance, or grooming, including hairstyle, of any enrolled student. The General Assembly also directed the Board of Education to establish guidelines and develop model policies for codes of student conduct to aid school boards in implementation of policies and guidelines, governing standards of dress and grooming codes and standards for reducing bias and harassment in the enforcement of any code of student conduct. Next slide, please. Thank you to all that served on the 2021-22 Code of Behavior Revisions Committee and to staff, students, and to staff, students, and parents for your continuous support for a positive and safe school environment. That concludes the Code of Behavior presentation.
Wonderful. Any questions? Ms. Williams.
Because these changes are extensive in a lot of places, and it's going to take quite a bit of time to go through these, who is the best person for us as a board to reach out for questions, or if parents have any questions?
So I can channel that communication. I can't say that I can answer every question, but I'd be happy to get you in touch with the person that could.
Okay, so it's easiest to funnel through you than?
Through me, please.
Okay. I definitely have questions.
And, and with all first readings or information items, are we, we're voting on something in two weeks, or not? We are, right, right. So as, uh, just with sort of common practice, any questions, concerns, you have the two weeks to sort of address them with Ms. Heebner and, um, her team. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on next, we'll go to, get my 1601, which is Sustainability Initiative Status Update, Al Chiroki. While he's making his way up here, I think it's important to sort of remind the public, uh, and, uh, maybe celebrate a bit that the United States Department of Education did recognize Prince William County Schools as a green designated school, one of five school divisions in the nation this year. This is, this is due to, uh, Al Chiroki and his team, our superintendent, his team, the entire division working across the, uh, the county. And, you know, and I was looking through the presentation, we don't have the names of all the members on the Sustainability Committee, and, and I think if we can put that up somewhere on the website, just to recognize how great this effort is. And I think for you folks who are attending tonight and those at home, this is going to be, uh, a really great presentation. So with that, Mr. Chiroki, all you.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board, uh, Dr. Waltz and Mr. Iman. Tonight, I am pleased to, uh, provide you with a presentation on the progress of the implementation of the Superintendent's Sustainability Committee. And as you're aware, back in June of 2020, you passed a resolution, and we have met with you back in September, and here we're, we are very excited to have Mr. Brian Gorham, who is our Supervisor of Energy Management and Sustainability, as well as the Sustainability Chair, Mr. Don Richardson, co-present the presentation and provide you with an update of all of the hard work and exciting progress that the committee has completed in such a very short time. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gorham to begin the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board. Thank you for having us this evening. This evening, we intend to present you an update on the energy and sustainability efforts in Prince William County Schools, and we have Mr. Richardson, who will be joining us and giving us an update on the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability. Next slide, please. In June of 2020, the school board wisely passed the Sustainability Initiative. The staff and I came to you in September and updated you on the action items from that resolution. We include tonight to be able to give you a progress made since September, provide you a status update for subsequent operations. Just want to make mention, you will be seeing Policy 495 Sustainability as a result of our efforts this year. And, um, again, I'll introduce the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability. Next slide, please. Some good news, as Dr. Latif mentioned, we did achieve a rank hardly achieved by other school divisions. It is the Department of Education's Green Ribbon Schools Award. Our staff worked diligently in putting together the paperwork and gathering all of the accolades that are necessary in order to apply for this award. Our school division has done so many great things throughout the years, and, um, it's really an honor to be able to kind of aggregate those together and put them into a presentation that the Department of Education, um, you know, respects and gives recognition to for our school division. So that award is a school division-wide award, and it certainly would go toward the efforts of the school board, the staff, the students, the community at large. I think we've all worked really hard over the last decade in order to try to implement some great things. We also received a, uh, another accolade called the Green Schools Challenge Award Winner for the V S B A. Now, we participate in this regularly, however, we have never been able to kind of get over that hump, that next step. And the Sustainability Initiative and all of the action items emanating from that gave us the opportunity to become the category winner of the 10,001 student and up category, which is the largest of the categories, I must say. So, uh, I think we've got a great student body, we've got a fantastic school board, who have all worked kind of together with staff again, and county, community participation in order to receive a well-deserved honor. We are working on some grants. I wanted to call attention to the NOAA Marine Debris Program Grant. It aligns well with our environmental literacy efforts, and it helps create great project-based learning opportunities. And then we are also working with the USDA on our computed, community compost and waste reduction efforts. Now, that's in, uh, kind of combination with the county efforts. We will create, uh, create bins for that organic waste, that orange peel, those things that are kind of collected at the school site, and then we'll have those transported using county resources over to the Balls Ford compost site, and then that compost will come back to us, so our teachers can use it for some of their project-based learning. So we think that's a great full circle exercise, and we've got a great staff who've been working on that. Next slide, please. Some additional progress that we are making, we are diligently working on getting solar more throughout the county. We have been working on a pilot program out at our Brentsville Transportation, um, site, and we are in the throes of pulling together an RFP proposal, working with finance, and they've been a great help to us, just to try to pull together all the necessary information and make sure that we do make wise choices when we enter into the PPA arena, if you will. We have not done this before, but we anticipate great results for you, and we'll bring those back to you as those bear fruit. Our electric bus grant, most of you, I think everybody here had a chance to ride the electric buses tonight, so, uh, you know, yeah, they're great buses, they're quiet, um, and Mr. Walton did a fantastic job driving those buses around. I'll say the air conditioning is great in that thing. As soon as it came on, it was a big relief, but I hope you enjoyed that. That is yet another indication of the partnerships occurring throughout the school division. You know, the division that I lead, having the opportunity to be in facility services, but working with transportation. It's been such a dynamic year, but this is just, again, one of those indications that there's a lot of networking going on amongst your staff, and a lot of benefits are being reaped from that participation. At Net Zero School Design, we are still on track, and we have begun the initial feasibility planning for our Okaquan Elementary School replacement for fiscal year 25-26. We've actually just, most recently, had one of our kickoff meetings in order to establish some of the parameters about the site, and looking towards some programming and that kind of thing. So that's a great first step as well into a new foray for the school division. You have asked us in the sustainability, and next slide, please. Remember to do that. Sustainability consultants was one of the things that was asked of us in order to take, you know, the benefit of those best practices that are known throughout the industry. We've looked and utilized some of those consultants, but we've also leaned on some fellow jurisdictions, Fairfax, Loudoun County. We've been able to kind of gather information throughout this entire process, and so, while I wouldn't necessarily call some of our partner jurisdictions consultants, I think to the betterment of the Sustainability Advisory Council, having them come in and teach and give us a perspective on what they were able to accomplish. It saves us those dollars that we're not going down, you know, that, that road of trying to do something that's otherwise not going to yield the benefit, but it also creates a network, again, that partnership and that, um, knowledge base that we're able to learn from. We're working on additional recycling and waste reduction efforts. We've got recycling and waste reduction projects going on to further those collection efforts inside the schools, but also we have student groups who are actually making headway in putting recycling bins outside on sites throughout high school sites. As a pilot, we've got some going over and over at Colgan High School. This group has worked very closely with our division and establishing a program that is completely student-led. It is a great example, again, of a project-based learning opportunity that these students can chart, they can create a project plan, they go through the steps, and then it yields the result, and they can feel proud about that. But then they share it, and then it's multiplied throughout our organization. And I think our students have the opportunity to be able to create these project-based learning exercises on their own with great adult support and a lot of questions, but we don't always do it for them. And then it yields a great, um, learning experience. Want to make sure that we do point out tonight our Policy 495 on Sustainability. I think you will find that we have endeavored to try to set a baseline for the school division with Policy 495, and that through doing so, we are making a commitment as a school division representing your sustainability initiative. Next slide, please. I would now like to take the opportunity to welcome Don Richardson to the podium. Don Richardson is our Chairman of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, which was formed in October 2020 as a result of the Sustainability Initiative. Mr. Richardson.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Dr. Waltz and Mr. Iman, it's good to be back, and I'm excited to present to you, uh, what we have done this year with the Advisory Council on Sustainability.
Let me interrupt and just remind the public that Mr. Don Richardson is a former member of this body and the representative of the Gainesville District, and has been extraordinarily helpful in leading this effort, and we can't thank you enough. So thank you and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. We, uh, we have got a great bunch, uh, on this council, uh, and we're going to be focusing in line with what you have directed us to do on three areas, collaborating with Prince William County, environmental literacy, and high-performance building and design. Next slide, please. We've got a great group. We have members appointed by the school board, we have staff, we have students, and we have a number of members of the community who have relevant expertise and experience in related fields. They're a very enthusiastic group with a lot of energy, uh, and a number of them are here tonight. I would like them to stand up and be recognized. Uh, I also would like, at this point, to give a huge thank you to the energy and sustainability staff who have facilitated and supported us. Their work has been just absolutely essential to what we have accomplished. They have really made it work for us, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with them going forward. Next slide, please. As I said, uh, we've spent the year kind of getting into harness. We are divided up into three subcommittees. Dr. Porta, Ms. Landry, and Ms. Johnson are driving those subcommittees. They, uh, we've had a very exciting and, uh, smooth process so far. Our mission, as you know, is to provide the Superintendent's School Board with high-level recommendations so that we can reduce our overall carbon footprint, protect the environment, and save money with emerging cost technologies, and also to evaluate and prioritize the long-term strategic plan for sustainability in design for facilities and construction, and expanding environmental literacy in the K-12 curriculum, and exploring clean energy technologies. I'd highlight key points, high level and long term. Staff is going to have to be responsible for a lot of the detailed work of implementation. We are going to try to provide a general roadmap, and of course, as time goes on, that roadmap may change depending on what we learn, but our goal is to give you a general roadmap going forward, uh, that goes in the general direction of where we want to go. Next slide, please. We've done a lot in a short time. Everybody's been participating, and we've all been learning a lot. We have had five meetings of the full council. Actually, we will have, we moved the main meeting until tomorrow night, so we could have a wrap-up before the summer break. Uh, and our subcommittees have been meeting monthly. We, uh, we've had, uh, staff updates on what we're currently working on, and we have a lot going on already in this county. It was really surprising to me, uh, how much is already being done. We have a lot of existing educational efforts, and we also have done a lot with Prince William County Government already. We have received presentations from, uh, community advocates, we have received presentations from external experts. One of the experts, for example, was a solar expert who brought us up to speed on the state of solar in Virginia, and how power purchase agreements work, and some building options that the school board will eventually be able to consider going forward when we design our buildings. We also took a look at, uh, local and, uh, national sustainability standards. It's been, this year has been educational for all of us. We're trying to get our, get ourselves wrapped around, uh, all the information that's out there, and there's a lot of terminology to make sure we're all on the same page. Next slide, please. We've had some guest speakers, uh, from Arlington County and Fairfax County Government, and also from our own county government on a variety of topics. We also, at our full council meetings, have provided an opportunity for citizen comment time, and there is definitely citizen interest in this topic. We've had, uh, several people at several of our meetings come in and offer some, some very thoughtful suggestions on things we should look at. One of the things that, uh, we have learned is that there's a whole lot to sustainability, and, uh, it's going to be interesting trying to sort out, uh, what we really need to focus on, because there's so many different ways you could go with this. This year, our recommendations are going to be, um, fairly high level, but as we go forward, uh, we think we will probably be giving you more specific recommendations, uh, in future years. Our recommendations are obviously going to be broken down, um, by our three subject areas, our three committee areas, and we'll start with the collaboration with the county, I believe. Next slide. The council is recommending that we establish a joint sustainability committee between Prince William County Government and the school division. Relevant staff from both sides, and possibly including members of each board. Make sure we have community members with relevant experience in the various areas, business and higher education, and advocacy groups, and students, and representation from communities that have traditionally been underrepresented. We want to make this a very broad, uh, scope. Along with that, we're recommending additional funding, uh, for additional staffing, including coordinator roles, uh, at both the county level and at the school division level to promote collaboration on environmental sustainability. The idea is that, while we have been doing a lot of work in the school division, uh, on energy management for some time now, the county has now stepped up and established their own sustainability office, and we think it's a good time to combine with them and see what kind of synergy we can generate, working together with the county. Next slide, please. On the environmental literacy front, uh, we already have a lot, uh, in terms of environmental literacy. We have a lot of internal partnerships, uh, with Ken Basset and Julia Renberg and the others from the Office of Student Learning. Environmental literacy is already part of the Prince William County curriculum at, at different levels, at various times of the year. Our science office, uh, has done a lot of work at the Eagle Center to give an elementary level what we call meaningful watershed educational experience. And for the middle schoolers, we have Prince William Forest Park and Nature Bridge. And then at the high school level, you have, uh, projects of study on environmental issues at the high school IB schools. But, uh, we are recommending, uh, for this area this year, that there be funding found for, um, excuse me, supplemental compensation for a team of teachers to research what the curriculum standards should be, survey the resources we currently have in this area, and review the state of professional development in this area, and then put together, uh, a task force to put together a report documenting all the existing environmental literacy efforts that we have, and propose a plan for how to use supplemental resources and provide a support structure to move these efforts forward. The energy, I should mention that the Energy and Sustainability Office, uh, aligns their work to the Office of Student Learning Core Instructional Mission Functions, so, uh, they are definitely working together, uh, to make this happen. Next slide, please. Finally, for our High Performance Buildings Committee, and, uh, I should note that High Performance Buildings, uh, doesn't, just encompass buildings, encompasses a lot of things that happen at our sites as well. But, uh, for now, we actually have a few recommendations. Short term, if you dig in the cushions and find any spare change, it would be, uh, a good idea to push forward with some of the projects we already have underway, the LED lighting projects and the smart irrigation projects that are going. Those are easy wins, and, uh, so any additional funding you can identify for that, uh, we recommend you push forward. There are going to be other efforts, but this is two that we, we spotted that we definitely could move forward right away. The other thing we want to do short term is make a cultural commitment to sustainability and adopt LEED Silver as the minimum baseline standard for all new construction and major renovation projects. I should note that, uh, LEED comes in four colors. There is basic LEED certification, which we are already doing with our new elementary schools. The last eight, I believe, uh, new elementary schools were designed to be LEED certified, and I think the ninth one, Rosemont Lewis, is coming. and I think the ninth one, Rosemont Lewis, is coming up, will be the same. We are recommending that we seek to up the game a little bit and, going forward, look for a LEED Silver certification. Now, we might go for gold, or we might even go for platinum, but we think it's better to start at silver. That seems to be the trend in other school divisions and other government organizations right now, and that we think is achievable. From a long-term standpoint, we think we need a design and construction manual, which includes planning and operations, to establish performance criteria that will position us to address the net-zero goals that a lot of people have been talking about. And of course, we're asking for funding for additional central office staff to coordinate the High Performance Buildings portfolio, to set the commitments, and evaluate and manage the operations. And you will note that in all three of our subcommittees, we have asked for additional We're doing a lot, but the more we get into this, the more we realize that to really, truly address the goals that you all have set, it's going to take more people. Our staff is doing a fabulous job, but a lot of these goals are going to require additional people. Next slide, please. We've been meeting virtually. It's been very efficient. Everybody can participate more conveniently, and of course, we make our own little contribution to sustainability by taking our cars off the road for all of these meetings. We're going to continue to do that going forward. We will have a regular meeting schedule, more or less bi-monthly, beginning in August of the full council, and again, more or less monthly for the subcommittees. We anticipate coming back to you next spring, roughly this time, with an annual meeting, or with an annual report, rather, excuse me. But if we come up with any brilliant ideas in the meantime, particularly ones that could be fit into the CIP, we will bring forward additional recommendations in the interim as appropriate. Some of the things we're going to be doing, we're going to be having virtual and in-person visits to sustainable facilities in the region. We are going to align the development of standards for literacy, environmental literacy, and align them to our strategic plan. We're going to have subject matter experts come in with regular presentations, and we're going to develop a method for tracking our recommendations and the related data so that later we can go back and see how well we did and adjust as necessary. And that is all I have for you this evening. Thank you very much.
Well, that was wonderful. I think if we have any questions, are you willing to take some questions, guys?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. And if there's any questions or comments the board may have. So first of all, I'll start, but just by saying thank you. That was an outstanding presentation. And again, you know, not to make light of this, but having a former school board member on this committee and leading the charge with the Sustainability Committee certainly helps, and just the language and you talking about, you know, coming to us in the interim with updates to the CIP really brings forward the fact that the experts we have here can actually make things happen. So that's what I really appreciate, and I've heard over and over again from this committee, from members of the committee, that they've been able to make things happen. I congratulate you all on working with the county so far, and I'll have some questions about that later on, but I'll turn it over. Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to congratulate you on the years that I've been here. Your environmental work has been tremendous. I'm sort of surprised, didn't we not receive some award from VSB for our initiatives at some point in time? Mr. Gorham?
Yeah, it's up on slide.
We did. This year, we received the Green Schools Challenge, and we received it for the ranking of 10,001 students or higher in the school division.
Yeah, I know that they ranked them. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank you for the ride on the bus. It was, the noise came when the air conditioning came on. I really didn't even realize that the bus was turned on. Did you notice that? That the only noise you heard was the air conditioning? It's a great ride, and I appreciate the opportunity. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. On slides, I think it's 10 and 11, we talk about, you don't have to pull up the slides, but we talked about this collaboration with the Board of County Supervisors. I was wondering, could you give me a little bit more insight on that and the purpose, and what do you think it looks like in any timeline?
Yeah, our sustainability team and committee met with a group of folks on the general government side to learn more about the initiative and the resolution that the Board of Supervisors recently came up with, but also gain an understanding of where they're headed. And I think what came out of that is they are looking at the county and all of its citizens. So they're not looking just at the general government department, they're looking at the entire county. So whereas we're looking at our school division in the educating of our children, which is a very broad topic as well. So we saw where their focus is a little different, but we did talk about synergies where we may be able to work together and do things simultaneously. So we made no formal commitments, but we did realize that once they get their department established themselves, because we're already a few steps ahead of them in that respect, that we will be coming back and dialoguing and then looking for ways to find that synergy. But they were very open and receptive to partnering as well.
I think that's a great idea. I also wanted to ask, you know, you received the awards. There's the energy awards, Mr. Gorham, the school awards, there's a performance award, I think in one of these slides I saw there's some school performance awards, or is there some recognition of schools for use of energy continuing? I know for the years it has been.
Yes, ma'am. So we've been having our energy challenge annually, so we recognize individual schools with a rebate for participating in that, and that's quantified by the amount of savings that they generate from their projects and those type of things. We also have historically applied for Energy Star awards, and then had a ceremony and kind of welcomed everybody together who have been able to achieve those in the past year. Obviously, that's been something we've kind of put on hold a little bit, but we will be kind of reigniting that. We anticipate this coming school year is going to be a fantastic opportunity for us to be back in the schools, be back present with the student body and the staff, and making all of these programs available on a very broad basis.
I just have a couple more questions. Project-based learning, you say you're doing a great deal with project-based learning. Could you give an example of some of the project-based learning types of activities our kids are engaged in?
Sure. I think one of the projects that we're working on, and I think I caught the end of it, was it community engagement?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So one of the ones that we're working on is, we know a lot of the community utilizes some of our open areas around some of our high schools, for instance. We had some students that came to us, a group that is named, they've named themselves, HEAL, but they are healthy environments, active learning, I believe, and they had a great opportunity and an idea about outdoor recycling. We have a lot of field use, we have a lot of community events at our sites, we have some track usage at some locations where people come. They were noticing that a lot of recyclable materials were being kind of just put in the mainway stream. And so they came to us with an idea, we helped them develop a project plan, see what the end goal would be, identify how you kind of go through that process of resourcing a project. I take every one of these opportunities very seriously, and we approach it as if it is a true project, step by step through it. It's a learning endeavor, they generate a schedule, then they generate the outcome from their hypothesis. Does it work? Are we going to get a lot of people to use these bins? That has yet to be seen, but that's one of the examples of the project-based learning, and we've worked with the school staff over at Colgan, and I think in order to get really attractive bins, something that the students can feel proud to be able to display and represent as part of their work. So then, if that takes flight, and they can go share that idea amongst other schools, that's just a built-in project that each one, right now, of these high schools could then just adopt and take on every year, and we can help support that.
Okay. One is very personal, it's net zero. I'd like for you to explain a little bit more about it, but you also mentioned that Aquaquan, the new Aquaquan School, you're looking at that being one of your first projects. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? I'm sure Mr. Porter would like to know more about that also, since it's in Aquaquan.
Mr. Porter said a lot about that this year.
I know.
And we think it's a fantastic opportunity. Based on the horizon in the CIP of new schools, Aquaquan represents the first and best effort that we have to create a net-zero school. It is a very big challenge for us. It's a very small site, we've got a lot of conditions we'll have to meet with being able to orient the school building, to utilize the best angle for solar, which is going to be the primary source of energy we're going to use to offset that grid-based power and take us to net zero. I think the main opportunity that we have here is to provide, you know, in the Aquaquan District, an example of an environmentally friendly school that then becomes kind of the baseline, at least if you will, for the rest of the school division. And we use that as an opportunity for students to be able to learn from every day, the visuals, the dashboards that we can use, the daylighting, the amount of green space that'll still be available on the site. And so all of that planning has begun, and we are committed to seeing that school through. We still have some hurdles to get through, as I alluded to earlier, but I think we see the end result of the new Aquaquan Elementary School being able to be designed for net zero.
Thank you. I know you always tell us how much money you've saved. I don't know if you have that information, but I just want to say that every presentation you guys have made to this board has been very professionally done and very extensive. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wilk had his hand up next. Mr. Wilk?
No.
Oh, Ms. Williams? Oh, sorry. Somebody down there, Mrs. Jackson.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I think the presentation, the initiative, and the time that the Sustainability Council put in reaffirms our commitment to our students' future, so I'm very grateful for your time. I do have one follow-up question, and it has to do with recycling. And you kind of touched on it, but I just want to maybe elaborate or just to confirm.
Okay.
How do we ensure that schools are recycling, or if they need any assistance with roadblocks that might impact recycling from like the school system or the county?
Yes, it's a great question, and it's one that I learned firsthand from an employee of mine who came up with some fantastic ways to approach this situation. She has developed some waste audit strategies, which will allow us the opportunity to go into schools, you know, and work with the nutritional staff, work with the teaching staff, work with students to the degree that there's interaction there, and try to understand exactly how much recyclable material is going into the mainway stream, and then learn for ways to divert it. Is it signage? Do we need to enhance our containers? Do we need to somehow do something more proactively in order to engage? And I think that's our first step, is the engagement piece. We've historically, I think we've done a great job of putting recycling bins out and expecting human behavior to take over. Everybody's got their best interests, so they'll put things in the recycling bin. There has to be some engagement, there has to be some leadership, and I think we are on the cusp of doing that, and that's our main priority in the coming school year.
Again, thank you for your time and the Sustainability Council's time, and for the students who came and spoke at us way back when, before the pandemic, I'm thankful for them coming to advocate and over.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shiroki, and thank you to Mr. Gorman. You've been around for quite so many years. Thanks for staying after our original program started. It's wonderful to see all the developments since that time. I think we already had the foundation for a great sustainability program. My question is, how, and of course, you don't have to answer this now, but I'd like to know how our sustainability program and energy and sustainability, what we have outlined, if we are taking advantage of our own specialty program at Freedom High School, which is the Center for Environmental and National Studies?
Right.
Because I know that that program could benefit and maybe be a leader in the way for some of our sustainability efforts, considering that's what they do and talk about. And you don't have to answer that now. I'd love to have some follow-up about that and how we can get them more involved, those students, and then any other partnerships that we entertain, because I know there have been a few during the past year, but I'm assuming we're put on hold, rightfully so, because the pandemic was of paramount concern. So just maybe later in the year, over the summer or in the fall, if we could get some more updates on how we're dealing directly with our own internal students and providing them opportunities, and any of the new partnerships that we are developing or considering developing, because I know like Mason and a few other groups, universities had reached out during the pandemic, so I did not expect anyone to work on that during the pandemic. But I'd like to know, some really big and have been advocating for a long time about utilizing our own students and our own internal resources, which I know you're a big proponent of, and expanding those opportunities to provide them some more real, real practical application and sort of for full circle, because I know this is done, we've done art contests and all kinds of things, so anything I think we can do to add value to our students besides just strictly literacy would be of benefit to you. So, and thank you again.
You're welcome.
Electronic buses were wonderful. Rearview mirror is the most amazing thing with the camera in there, and it is a quiet ride, so I know some of our neighborhoods will appreciate that as well, and I look forward to seeing what we will continue to improve upon in the future. Thank you.
And if I may, real quickly, just to, I will answer you more in detail, and we'll send that through. Freedom is a great example, though, of some infrastructure that's been in place that some students identified needed a little bit of assistance in order to try to get back on track, some solar panels that we've got, the greenhouse that's out there, and we have some student-led efforts going on right now, and they're working with our facility staff to make sure that those systems are in place and working in order to facilitate what you're describing as some project-based opportunities, and they've been leading the way, which I'm just so thrilled with.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you. And also, if you could throw Belmont on that list, because I know they're right there with the sign.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you to Mr. Shiroki and Mr. Gorham, did I get that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Richardson for your efforts in leading this council. This was, this looks extremely organized and efficient. I like how you've set it up with the subcommittees and the clear focus. I think you're going to get a lot done, so I really think that's great, and you have done a lot already, which is fantastic. And I'm glad to hear that we're working with neighboring jurisdictions who maybe are a little bit further down the road from us, because why reinvent the wheel? You know, good education starts with good information, and I think that's great. I also am happy to hear about some of the student-led activities, the composting that you mentioned. I didn't miss which school, but was it Colgan?
So we've got six schools that are participating.
Oh, six schools?
Right now, yeah. And so they'll, we've got a great opportunity in front of us, and we'll report back to you on that. I think it's going to be some great examples, again, of student-based learning and that kind of interaction.
So that's awesome to hear. My question, I have just two. My first question is regarding the high-performance building goal target, and I'm thinking about the SRR3 funds, that large reward pot of money that we may be able to access if we can come up with, you know, justifiable items. Is there any, is it too early to speak to that, or, you know, as we are looking forward towards sustainability, are there efforts? Because sustainability ties directly into healthy environments, you know, for mental health, the physical health, and other things like that, air quality, et cetera. So are there efforts or identifiable, I guess, objectives that we could possibly look towards with SRR funds to help us with our sustainability goals?
Yeah, I can speak very briefly to that. In working with our finance department and Mr. Mallingford and his team, as we're reviewing the conditions that the state is putting upon, one of the conditions in dealing with facilities is that our goals of use of the money is to find things that provide mitigation, COVID mitigation when it comes to our facilities, primarily HVAC-type work. Now, obviously, when you look at sustainability, indoor air quality is a huge piece, so any way that we can replace our equipment when it's the appropriate time and provide new energy-efficient equipment that is rated as such compared to the older equipment, but also provide filtered fresh air at the appropriate rates and continue to do that, that is a good thing. So right now, sustainability is not one of the conditions that we've seen as a primary focus, but it is mainly looking at HVAC, which still deals with good air quality and environmental conditions within a school when it comes to temperature, humidity, and things of that nature.
Thank you. That's good. I look forward to being able to at least try to do something in those areas, improve, especially we have older schools with, you know, issues and things like that. My second question is, you mentioned working with the county and how we may be a little bit ahead of the county, or we have slightly different goals because we have education in our buildings, whereas they have other focuses. But are there, I wondered if you could speak just a little bit more to that, where you see areas where our goals and their goals might align, and we could realize economies of scale or economies of, like financial economies?
Yeah, obviously, and again, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but, you know, if we were to look at, we're looking at our building design standards. You know, the policy tonight sets the baseline, but your resolution is very specific on doing our best to focus on, say, net zero, carbon neutrality. That's what we're looking at as an ultimate goal. The county is, really didn't talk about focusing on their specific buildings and things of that nature, but it could be things such as safe routes to schools, so that people are walking healthy, you know, versus riding the bus or riding a car to school where it's appropriate. Litter campaign, litter-free campaigns, water quality, things where we can partner, where they have a county-wide initiative, but we are a member of the county and we can help promote those, not only within our schools, but within our students and their families, things that are out in the residential areas. But as far as specific types of ideas and projects, they were not there, or they did not share with us that level, because again, they're establishing that foundation. But again, as you said very well, we're focused they're establishing that foundation. But again, as you said very well, we're focused on our school division, and they are looking at the county as a whole. So their lens is a lot broader than ours in many respects, but there will be some similarities. And as we grow and mature with them, I think those will resonate, and then we'll be coming back, and the committee will vet those, but then we'll ultimately come back with some recommendations. They were very receptive.
Thank you so much for answering my questions, and thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Wilk and then Ms. Zargarpur.
I'll be brief. First, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, tonight, and everyone for their work. One of the first things in my foray in the local government was Supervisor Principi put me on the Solid Waste Management Committee way long ago, and people were like, well, that's exciting. You're dealing with landfill and all this other fun stuff. But the cool part about it was that was at the onset of Colgan being built and that partnership. And it's great to kind of see the fruition of that partnership and it come full circle from the skepticism that members in that room had about how we're going to actually partner with the school system to where we're at now. So I think that's commendable, and I love that we're moving forward with that direction. The other thing is, I'd like to see, again, kind of expanding this more to the younger grade levels. Potomac Middle, I'm proud of the aquaponics program that we have there and the greenhouse back there, kind of a hidden gem back there that we are doing before COVID kind of disrupted that process, but moving forward with that. So I'd like to see potentially more partnerships and opportunities with the, whether it be middle schools or elementary schools. A lot of them are in great placements near wooded areas or other environmentally friendly areas that I think we could build partnerships, whether it be like Patty at Forest Park or Montclair or something. And all of our schools have different opportunities there. But just something to explore in exposing our youngest kids to this very early as they progress through our schools. So thank you all.
Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you so much for this presentation. It was very, very interesting. It has a lot of different layers to it. So I wanted to, first of all, thank you for answering Ms. Wall's question, because I was going to ask about HVACs and maybe where we could be going with that. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wall. But I am actually curious about, it says expansion of environmental literacy in K-12 curriculum. So my brain is going, it's kind of obvious in elementary school. You can sort of fit things in a little bit differently. What does that look like in middle and high school? I mean, are we talking about this is going to be in our biology classes? Is it's aligning with our SOLs? I'd just like to hear a little bit more about how that might look.
Sure. And I think most of what we are discussing, we're at the onset of developing those plans. We are working with Mrs. Goss and Mr. Basset and trying to find the best ways for our resources to benefit their planning, if you will, and have that collaboration. We see opportunities to get out into the local parks. To Mr. Wilk's credit, the point that he just made about those partnerships with the county, we have an extensive trail network. We have lots of park systems. We have lots of waterways in our own local jurisdiction. So working towards some of that watershed protection, those projects can start at the elementary level and gain kind of an awareness as you rise through the grade levels. And as you get older into that middle school and then high school level, maybe you're now developing some of those project objectives for the younger students. And it is perhaps going to align with SOLs. We don't necessarily include environmental literacy, per se, as an SOL requirement, but we do have the tentacles of environmental literacy sprinkled throughout our studies. And so I think we do have a student awareness of that. But we've got to provide resources to student learning to make sure that they understand from a facility's perspective, we can help with the watershed management, some of the waste and the recycling efforts we've talked about. And we've got that capacity to help provide educational materials we've already developed as part of our energy management and conservation programs and turn those into those project opportunities.
Then the next piece of this would be, I think that since the future is going this direction, what college and career or tech ed or something that we can connect for our older students into something where they're learning at Nova or at a neighboring college or jobs and things like that in the future. So you don't have to have an answer for that. We may not even know what some of those things are. But I have a lot of hope for the future, that this is going to be another, it's the next industry, so to speak. So that's just one of the things.
I think the next year will bear that fruit, right? As we begin to, again, continue our networking and more so in person, now we can really dive deeply. We've just touched on it.
Thank you so much for all your work. I am done.
You're good. Thank you very much.
So I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity. I'd like to introduce Mayor Ernie Porta is here with us. Mayor Porta, could you stand, please? Thank you. Mr. Porta is the mayor of the town of Okeechobee. And actually, Mr. Porta, I'd like you to come to the mic. I have a question for you specifically, as you chair the Committee on Collaboration with the County. Dr. Porta, he serves, he's a busy man. He serves his time for this committee, which, as Don Richardson pointed out, is going to be meeting very regularly. So first of all, they're going to meet monthly. We all know how hard it is to get to monthly anything. And so I can't thank the committee in general for all of the service they're providing to this county, and they do this free of charge. Dr. Porta is also serving on the 9/11 Commission set up by Mr. Wilk and the Curriculum Committee. So we're very appreciative. Dr. Porta, please tell me, I know you work closely with the county just as a mayor of the town of Okeechobee. As we move forward on this issue, and I know some members had asked what synergies we have with their new office, and Mr. Richardson pointed this out, the challenges, what challenges do you see that we, as a board, can help you with the committee, or you can help us with work with the county to get the most impact in the shortest amount of time?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the discussions, I will say, with some of the supervisors, supervisors from both parties, I can say, in discussing a little bit about what we're doing at the school level, coordinated, of course, with Chair Richardson and with the county staff in doing this, it seems to me that you're going to have, in the county, we're going to have relatively enthusiastic partners. In other words, folks that are actually interested in collaborating. I think the real challenge will probably be to find areas of common ground where information can be exchanged to the mutual benefit of the parties. To just be candid about it, there are things that I've learned where the school system is really doing great things and has a lot of expertise. And I suspect the county may be doing a little bit more than I realize they are doing. I suspect it's not at the same level, and we've had some discussions about this with the county, not at the same level that the school system is. So I think, quite frankly, that the school system is going to be able to transfer some knowledge to the county. And the county, hopefully, will be able to transmit some knowledge to the school system staff that will be mutually beneficial. Then what I think will be another challenge is that inevitably, in this kind of environment, when you're talking about sustainability, land use issues are going to come up. And I think that is one of the areas where I would really love, and I think others would as well, to see more collaboration between the county and the school system, because the schools are going to need, the school system is going to need land for additional schools. It's going to be competing, as you already know more than anybody else, you're competing for the demand for parks, for other open space. Well, I think there are ways at looking at this through a sustainability lens that makes collaboration on that easier. And so I think those are going to be some of the challenges. Finding some common ground where you're going to be able to exchange information that's mutually beneficial, which I think will take a little time as the groups become familiar with each other, working more regularly. Now, I do want to say, we didn't get into details in our recommendations, but the way we've been looking at it from the subcommittee that I chair and endorse by the full committee is, we expect this to be a regular, perpetual collaboration between the county and the school system, not something that has put something together and then come back and give a report in a year with recommendations of your collaboration. We view this as something that should be a regular, ongoing, regular part of business. And I think you're going to find that that buy-in exists at the Board of County Supervisors level as well. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, no, that's great. And then one last question, because I know, and I check in with members of the committee, and I can't thank you all. Again, they have worked so well together, and there's just our folks, Melinda Landry and Christine Johnson, this other subcommittee chair's amazing work. But you made a recommendation to the county to have a county-wide sustainability task force, and your recommendations from your group are to make sure there's area experts on that group. So it's, tell me a little bit about that.
Correct. So I will, yeah, I think it's appropriate for me to leak a little bit of the details of the discussions with the county. So one of my functions, actually, was to communicate with members of the Board of County Supervisors, because the Board of County Supervisors is taking action, as you know. And I worked particularly with Supervisor Bodie, Chair Wheeler, and Supervisor Canlin, all of whom were very generous with their time, very open to the discussions. And what is expected is, hopefully, that there will be a joint body of some sort in the future established. There will be liaisons from each of the individual boards, somebody from the school board, somebody from the Board of County Supervisors. But then the folks from Sustainability Commission, somebody from this body that I'm on as well. But then the superintendent and the county executive will appoint people, taking into account both the staffing within each of their respective entities, as well as the subject matter expertise that is necessary. We also have advocated in the specifics for student representation, two students, one appointed by the school board and one appointed by the Board of County Supervisor. That also has been met enthusiastically. The idea being that it would be great for both boards to show a commitment to have future generations be involved in the planning that we're talking about now. Now, I just want to caution you that this is all that we recommended, essentially. There will ultimately have to be votes about this, and both bodies will have to agree to that sort of structure. But that's the kind of thing that we've been discussing in detail with the county. I think the Board of County Supervisors supports it in a bipartisan fashion. Those three supervisors, anyway, that I've been dealing with regularly have been very, very supportive and generous with their time in discussing it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Porta. I really appreciate it. I think it's great that you sort of explained to the public as well that this has bipartisan support, county-wide support. And we have sort of folks from all different angles looking at this, looking to make sure we work together, and we can't thank you enough for that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to take a little bit of a victory lap on this myself, just a bit. And I have a real quick set of thank yous we need to make. On the electric buses, if you didn't get a chance to ride them, fantastic, beautiful, great work. I have to thank Dominion Energy for their commitment to the state. They put out 50 buses to school divisions. We got two of them. It's a pilot program. They paid the difference of what a regular bus to this bus would cost, close to about $200, $250,000 on each bus. And so that was great. I want to thank Mary McGowan, Division Counsel, because she wrote the pilot language and all the legal documentation that the entire state modeled on this project with Dominion. And moving forward will be the basis, we hope, for more of these projects with Dominion Energy. And so I think it's really important for everyone to know Dominion Energy has stepped up in a big way, and we are very grateful for that. The beginning of this resolution that started last summer came from the work that I consulted with Jay Facet from Arlington County. I see you're working with Arlington County folks. Who was a former chair of their Board of County Supervisors, put their first net-zero school together, the Discovery School. Tiziana Botino with the Climate Action Network, the students that pushed hard for this effort to be made, we have to thank them. We wouldn't have got to this U.S. Green Designee Award green ribbon. If you look at the details on how it was selected, if you go through the packet of how they decided, it was decided on a number of things. Our historical work we've done with lead work, when Mr. Richardson was on this board, when they built the 25 schools that have been there since the superintendent has been here, 25 buildings have been built, all with an eye towards green, lead, and all of that, the redoing of the lights, this is nothing new. And that's what the U.S. Federal Department of Education recognized. But then all the new stuff, they recognize our sustainability initiative, our commitment to working towards net zero. This is really important for the public to understand. And one might say, why are you spending all this time, Dr. Latif, on this tonight? We're the largest employer in Prince William County. We employ 15,000 people. We have 91,000 students. We run buses all day long. We feed a lot of folks. There is a lot of areas where we are the biggest player in almost everything in this county, the biggest budget, the biggest everything. So we also have the biggest responsibilities to move forward in a direction that I think that is beneficial to the entire community. So I can't thank you all for doing that. I want to thank Mr. Gorman, working with the students on some of that project-based learning. You, Jessica Weimer, have shown enthusiasm working with these students, and I hear from these students. I hear from these different student groups. I hear from the different folks. We, just in our division, and it's important for everyone in our division to know, in all offices, whether it be finance or whether it be in food services, have opportunities for student learning. I mean, we have internal internship, things that we could think about. And as you guys have start leading the way on this, there are things maybe we can do and utilize more for the whole school division, because we have area experts right here. I mean, you don't have to go work at Amazon. You have guys in IT who know what the cloud is and how it works, and you're managing the 35th largest school division in the cloud. It's a lot of great stuff. Again, please forgive me, this is a really great initiative, and I want to make sure I don't forget to say anything. The curriculum basis, some of these students are also working to implement SOL initiatives with the state on making sure that there's environmental literacy at the SOL level that would then drive school divisions to do this. But then you guys are also doing this with your committee work. So, again, I can't thank you all enough, and I've taken much of your time, and this board has taken much of your time, but the community really thanks you. And Mr. Richardson, you're putting them on a pretty hard work program for monthly meetings, but you're doing it with sustainability in mind and using Zoom moving forward. So, Mr. Shiroki, any final comments?
Yeah, just two items. One, I would be remiss if I did not thank each of the members that were either appointed by yourself, by Dr. Walt, by our staff. Each of our committee members have an individual talent, a skill, and a knowledge that has really allowed this committee to go. They say they haven't done a lot, but they really have done a lot. And the progress that they've made, it's really set the course for us to be able to carry that forward. At the same time, I know that our committee would love to very quickly get a photo with the board, if we could, before they leave.
Sure.
If we could just do that very quickly, and then we're done.
If the committee can come to the front here of the podium, and then we can take a picture, that would be fantastic. And the board members can come down the front, and I hope somebody has a camera.
We've got that.
It would have been helpful.
All right, say cheese. Sustainable cheese?
We're going to have to find a better place to do this.
We don't have a lot of good news. I was, you know. All right, wonderful. Folks, we're going to move on now to 1701, Student Representative Matters. Do I have something I have to say? Mr. Ben Kim? Matters. Um, do I have something I have to say? Mr. Ben Kim, Unity Reed High School, please, sir.
Oh, thank you. Um, I mean, man, I'm just, I'm so, so pumped after hearing that presentation. Um, and as to someone who's on there, who's on the committee, um, for sustainability, I mean, it's just been amazing. Um, and I appreciate everything tonight. Like, I mean, a lot, a lot has occurred during my two years here, but I must admit, like, I was very excited for tonight in particular because of this, of our county's increasing commitment to sustainable efforts. It's very applaudable. And I can't talk about this without, again, thanking the energy management team and all the staff working on these efforts. You guys are rocks. You guys are like rock stars. And like, the last number I saw was like $47 million saved or something from energy management, which is like, that's insane. And taxpayers, that's like great news. Um, I, just to follow up, I can't really follow up the presentation, but I wanted to comment on this pressing topic. Uh, we heard so much about student perspective, so I thought I might offer some. Um, as many as you know, a large number of students are very interested in sustainability, like everything we've heard, like HEAL and the Colgan Group, uh, and everyone advocating for the, uh, literacy. Uh, you can really tell from the, our students enrollment in environmental courses, the CNES at Freedom, uh, posting on social media, and the ubiquity now of ecology and green clubs at each school. Uh, yeah, like Ms. Jackson, you saw yesterday, I mean, kids were willing to toil under the sun for our gardening project at Unity Reed. Um, as now, as PWCS ushers in a greener and brighter future, I ask everyone to let us students be involved in the battle. I mean, I heard you guys talk about it, which is awesome, like internships and stuff. I mean, we can really, you know, this is a good capital resource we can use, allocate, and all these students are super, like, interested in this. So let our enthusiasm be turned into palpable action, um, where we were planted here in PWCS, because it's a resource that can really be taken advantage of. Um, just to offer some suggestions on what we heard tonight, uh, this could take the form of, uh, green clubs, learning directly from energy management, um, providing feedback and ideas for the county's sustainability efforts, or even partnering with the workers on a project at their school. Uh, you know, I'm talking like CTE students, learning firsthand about the technology this board pays for, and learning about it from those experts. You know, we have the experts here, let's learn from them. Students could help maintain solar panels, uh, ES classes could lead projects at their school, like those Colgan students, um, or even lead composting. All, there's so much food waste at lunch, um, they can use their knowledge to improve the sustainability of their school building. That's something to be so proud of, and to improve your own school building sustainability. I mean, there's just so many opportunities. Um, and like those, those, like, that pilot program at this exclusively, that's like a perfect example of what I'm talking about and what more should be done. Um, students can serve their communities in these capacities, but they can also learn so much in the world of sustainability. Um, I just, I love hearing that phrase, project-based learning. It just makes me so excited. Um, kind of on a side note, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, two of the three fastest growing jobs are wind turbine service technicians and solar photovoltaic, uh, installers, basically renewable energy, uh, technician people. So CTE and sustainability can totally go hand in hand. Be super cool to see that, um, in what kids are taught in those engineering classes. Um, by being involved and exposed to sustainability, students will grow more interested in the topic. And we've heard, we need the next generation of leaders to be educated about this issue, because we're the generation who will solve it. If I'm a kid and I see, like, an actual solar panel at my school, I'm gonna be so curious as to what that is. And like, like, you know, kids, they're, they're very curious about that. And just having that, like, in elementary school could bring huge educational benefits. Um, that installation of, like, a solar panel not only has a very generous ROI in terms of finances, um, and the environmental impact, but the immeasurable value of inspiring our students and teaching them firsthand about this green technology. There's just so many opportunities, and they just need to be pushed for. I'm sure some, yeah, you guys have seen Discovery Elementary, the net zero school. I mean, it just looks like a utopia. And if I put myself in the shoes of a student there, I would just would be so excited to go to school every day. And to be just surrounded by that net zero, um, it's just, it's just inspiring. And there's no, those students are gonna get a great education in that environment. And it's just, those sustainable schools like that are beautiful for the environment, beautiful for communities, and beautiful for students to be, uh, to learn in and learn from that actual building. It's fantastic that PWCS, uh, will soon join the net zero building party, uh, with, like, Aquan Elementary and stuff. Uh, but it's not enough until all the school buildings, even old ones like my own, Unity Reed, have been renovated to this level. Um, so what can us, uh, us here tonight and those at home do to push towards, uh, sustainability? Uh, board members, uh, you can continue to pass bold policy that ushers in this brighter future. Uh, much like the equity statement, equity lens, uh, sustainability can and ought to be woven into all decisions, uh, regarding construction renovation. Um, admin KLC leaders, it's up to you all to ensure the application, uh, of policies like 495, uh, so that the impact is actually made. Uh, and teachers, uh, you can help get your students interested in this topic. Uh, after all, it's an issue that they all have to deal with their entire lives. It's very relevant. Uh, so even if you're not a science teacher, sustainability is a topic that can be woven into every subject. And that's part of its beauty. Uh, it can bring together, people together from all walks of life. It's very interdisciplinary. Uh, there could be environmental literature woven into English classes, discussions in those world languages like Spanish and French, um, art being made on the subject, uh, sustainable economics, uh, and in history classes, like, you can teach, like, the Kyoto Protocol and really exemplary efforts, uh, by international groups to, like, stop the ozone layer depletion. Great example of, of international cooperation. And, you know, sustainability can even be woven into, like, elementary school math problems, like Sally has a tree, you know, two trees go away. I don't know, something like that. Uh, but all in all, it's clear students want a greener and brighter PWCS. They want to be educated about this pressing topic. The demand is there. And like, we've, we've heard about tonight, like, they would be ecstatic to be involved firsthand with our experts and our amazing teams here in helping their county move towards a sustainable future. So let us help. We're a resource for you guys. Give as many students as possible who are interested, uh, the skills and opportunities to help support sustainability efforts. Students can be the change, and, uh, we would love to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. We're moving on to 1702, Appointment and Announcement of Student Representatives. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Danya Sharifi and Charlotte Flynn as student representatives to the Prince William County School Board, and appoint Maquette Serafil as the alternate student representative to the Prince William County School Board for the 2021-22 school year.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like a second.
Excellent. Very good. Um, any discussion? Ms. Williams.
Um, I just want to say again, it's an honor to, to have student representatives serve with us on the board and, uh, watch the continual development of this role as each new student comes in and changes it, modifies it, and it grows, um, only for our betterment. And I am continuously thankful for all of those students who not only apply, but then choose to serve with us.
Wonderful. Ms. Williams. Um, okay, please vote. Ms. Ralston? Ms. Ralston said, I heard yes, or I saw yes. Ms. Yes, Ms. Ralston said yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Wonderful. Congratulations. And I'll say their names again. Danya Sharifi, she is of, gonna be at the New Gainesville High School. Charlotte Flynn of Woodbridge Senior High School. Maquette Serafil will be our alternate from Hilton High School. Uh, my understanding is there are over 100 applicants. This was a very competitive year. Congratulations to all those who tried, and we wish you the best, and, and, uh, we hope you continue to serve your schools and, and work with your student councils and, and, and all the groups. So thank you all. Next, we'll move on to superintendent's time. Um, we have tonight, this evening Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman filling in for Superintendent Dr. Waltz. Mr. Iman.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairwoman Zargarpur, and members of the board. I am standing in for Dr. Waltz during his absence tonight so that he can attend his daughter's final dance concert and performance. Any sense his regards. Even during a pandemic, our school division continues to earn accolades. The Virginia School Counselor Association has elected Melissa Leish, Leishner, excuse me, if I mispronounced that, school counselor at Bristow Elementary School to serve on its Board of Directors. Ms. Leishner is one of the nine members on the board and will serve a three-year term. As a member of the board, she hopes to serve as an advocate on behalf of all Virginia school counselors and students. She said she looks forward to helping school counselors provide comprehensive school counseling programs to meet the needs of every student. During the pandemic, the Virginia Science Education Leadership Association elected Julia Renberg, Supervisor of Science and Family Life Education, as its next president. Ms. Renberg was voted in as president at the organization's 2021 Spring Conference, and her appointment took effect immediately. She will serve a two-year term. Dr. Waltz shared that he has had the opportunity to recently to visit several schools and participate in some classroom activities during the pandemic. Jennifer May, a second grade teacher at Kyle Wilson Elementary School, held a virtual field trip with her class to see a beehive up close and personal. Ms. May's husband is a beekeeper who took students inside the hive to meet the queen bee, drones, and the worker bees. Later that same day, Dr. Waltz visited Springwood's Elementary School, where he played a hand bell, exercised with the physical education students, in the virtual jungle ninja run, and talked to students and staff about their experiences this school year during the pandemic. He also recently attended and congratulated our graduates at Pace West, stopped by both Tyler Elementary School and Swan's Creek Elementary School, and attended the celebration of the publication of works of, for students at Unity Reed High School who participated in the Origin Project, and cheered on the tennis athletes at the last home competition for the Woodbridge High School teams. During a previous meeting, we congratulated our Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year. Our communications team has been completing videos to help you get to know our outstanding winners a little better. Tonight, we will share those two videos, beginning with the Teacher of the Year. Please roll the video.
I'm Jamie. Um, this is my eighth year teaching in Prince William County and, in general. I am the seventh grade math teacher.
Ms. Juber is just an amazing, beautiful human being that puts people first. It's about lifting others up.
I see some confident people picking, picking one and sharing to everyone in the chat.
She embodies everything that we look for in a teacher that we bring. People that are gonna put children first, um, that wanna build relationships and build experiences that are authentic, relevant, and real.
Yeah, yeah. That's the Juber. That's the Juber.
When you make those relationships, you figure out what those students are interested in and how to connect what they're interested in to what you have to teach them in whatever subject you're teaching.
Ms. Juber is the sort that if you maybe fail today, she's helped us rethink and re-fame failure. That it's an opportunity to grow forward and lean forward and go one more round and grow as kids.
I feel like I was, I was meant to be a teacher. You're a parent in some aspects. You are a teacher to teach curriculum. You have to be so many different things for these students. I love helping. Um, I love making connections with students. This year's been so hard, and I would not be where I am today, this year, without my team that I have. Um, not just the team, but Fred Lynn as a school.
Ms. Juber is so successful here at Fred Lynn because the kids see through fake. The kids know that she's there for them. There's nothing they can't go to Ms. Juber for. It could be something that's happening at home, on the street, in the classroom. Ms. Juber's always gonna be there for her kids. And they know it.
Principal Shaw is somebody who gives 150% every single day. And the way she handled the pandemic just exemplified the greatness that she does every day. Most of the staff she's hired, so she relates to the staff every day. I am still very honored and surprised to have been selected as Principal of the Year. I'm incredibly blessed to work with so many dedicated educators who will do anything for the success of students.
The best thing about Principal Shaw is her sense of family and her trust for her educators.
Mrs. Shaw is a great administrator. She is great at interpersonal relationships, and she is just awesome.
She knows every student's name. So she's out there in the morning greeting every child. She's so happy that they're here. Um, even our virtual students, she's joining Zoom classes and making sure that she's still connecting every day to our families.
Good job, Myra. One of my favorite parts of the job is being in the classroom. I love to support students and see what they're learning and have a chance to interact with the teachers. We help our students believe that they are capable of achieving anything as long as they have a growth mindset and they're willing to work hard. If they develop that growth mindset early on, they are headed for lifelong success.
Uh, she always does her best to make sure that everybody feels like they're taken care of and that they're special. And she always wants to help and help, she's helped me become a better teacher.
Mrs. Shaw is the best person in this school.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Shaw.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard Eagle. I really appreciate that.
As you know, our amazing Food and Nutrition Services staff have been feeding our families since the pandemic began. At last count, they have served nearly 22 million meals. With the school year coming to an end shortly, this important service to our community will experience some changes, June, some changes. June 7th will be the last day of the bulk meal service, with PD, PWCS serving a week's worth of groceries on that day. When summer school begins, PWCS will provide free meals at 62 sites for students in attendance, with select locations offering times available to the public. We will be sharing more specific information through our website, social media, emails to families, through the scoop and local media, so please watch for more information soon. Because of the pandemic, Virginia Code and Authority granted by the General Assembly has required our school board agenda topics to be limited. Because of this limitation, we have temporarily suspended board recognition and approval of many proclamations honoring very, various observances. However, I do think it is important to mention these additional observances. June is LGBTQ plus Pride Month. PWCS recognizes that together we can celebrate one another and foster a welcoming environment for all students and staff. June 19th is Juneteenth, which is the oldest known commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States. It marks the day in 1865 that enslaved people in Galveston, Texas, the last of the former Confederate states to abolish slavery, finally heard that the Civil War had ended and learned that the Emancipation Proclamation had made them free nearly, nearly two years earlier. Although this year, Juneteenth is on Saturday, PWCS will close on Friday, June 18 to recognize this important occasion with a holiday for employees. As Dr. Waltz stated at the last school board meeting, he has a proposed plan for one-time employee pandemic pay adjustment. As you recall, the superintendent's proposed 2021 budget, the one for this current school year, included a 2% employee cost of living adjustment, in addition to the step increase. And this was then unanimously approved by the school board in the adopted budget. Unfortunately, the pandemic came shortly thereafter, and with an abundance of caution regarding economic uncertainty, that 2% increase was removed. Tonight, I'm pleased to share that our financial picture has improved. As such, the superintendent will propose as part of the final year-end adjustments, brought per standard protocol to the school board at the next meeting, a one-time 2% pay adjustment for all active employees with a minimum of $1,000. Therefore, no active employee would receive less than $1,000. While not a cost of living adjustment, because it is only a one-time pay adjustment, the superintendent's proposal provides the school board with an opportunity to meet the intent of the superintendent and the school board's original unanimous decision regarding the 2% raise. The superintendent's proposal also fulfills the request of several school board members who have expressed interest in rewarding and thanking all our dedicated employees for the extra work that was done for our students, their families, and our community, as we close out the pandemic-affected school year. Based on individual conversations with school board members regarding this plan, we also understand that the school board may also consider a plan of its own for a one-time pay adjustment. In closing, I sincerely, sincerely thank our outgoing student representatives to the school board, and welcome and congratulate the incoming students. Thank you, and stay safe and healthy.
1901, New Policy 495 Sustainability. First reading, Mr. Chiroki.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. Waltz, Mr. Iman. Uh, this is the first read, uh, for you to receive information on the new policy, 495, titled Sustainability. Uh, this is in accordance with the resolution and obviously the presentation that you just heard, uh, earlier this evening. This policy sets the benchmark or a baseline that will give the overarching guidance that will be incorporated, uh, from here out. that will give the overarching guidance that will be incorporated from here out.
That's it, anybody have any questions? Great, it looks great, so we have two weeks and we'll be voting on this at the next meeting, correct? Outstanding, sir, thank you. At this point where it board matters, I'm gonna excuse myself because I have to be on the road. I'm leaving town, and so I will leave it to Ms. Zargarpur. Thank you, everyone, congratulations to our, I'll just say one quick thing. Congratulations to our graduating seniors. It's impossible for us to attend all the commencements. There's a lot of them, and some are at the same times. But congratulations, best wishes on a wonderful year, and we know you're gonna make Prince William County proud wherever you all may go. Thank you, and have a great evening, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, drive safely. We'd like to start with Ms. Jessie this evening.
First of all, I want to thank all the teachers and thank the superintendent for providing his plan. And I understand that it will probably be relooked at by the board. I wanted to, I went to Antietam Elementary, and they have this mapping activity where they invite people in to talk about their origin. And I was able to discuss my origin. And I shared with them that up until maybe three years ago, I thought I was a descendant of Native American descent. And I bought items in my house thinking that I was. Only when ancestry.com came out and said that I was not. So, we had a great laugh about that. And I was able to put on the map my heritage is from Africa. And also, I am looking forward to all the graduation ceremonies, and I will not be able to attend all of them, but I want to congratulate all the students who are graduating. And I'm looking forward to the fifth-grade promotional ceremonies, and this year's gonna be a drive-by. So, I think I'll be driving for three or four in one day, but I'm looking forward to the end of the year. And to all the teachers, you know that Mrs. Zargarpur and I have both been talking about some type of compensation, and I want to say thank you to all of you. The word I've heard from most people has been the word exhaustion. And as we finalize this hazard page situation, I want to say thank you to all of you for the school secretaries who came in early, the people who did the 10,000 IEP, the hundreds of emails that related their emotional and real concern about their families and personal safety, learning a new instructional delivery system to include teachers, to include teaching classes, we had two classes at once, scheduling and making class changes on a dime, the sheer fear of working in what could be described as a toxic environment that you could not see, feel, or hear. I say to you nothing but gratitude. And as you know, I've given a cup to my people in Oqon District. So, tonight, I bring to you my, you take one second. I have a cup of gratitude to all the teachers and principals and secretaries and custodians and everyone. And it is one of my, one of my cups that is a Tiffany Cup. So, to all the teachers and all the staff that have worked this year, this cup of gratitude is to you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, I'm gonna try to squeeze it all in here in three minutes. First, I'd like to also echo Happy Pride Month. I'm dismayed that we aren't able to do our normal proclamations, but I think it's the appropriate time to mention that, you know, LGBTQ+ youth are still not able to fully participate safely within our community. So, protecting them fully while they are in our public school system is a respite from the trauma that they may be experiencing while not in school. We know that the dropout rate for LGBTQ+ youth is three times higher than their hetero counterparts, and that they make up 40% of the homeless youth population, and they are three times more likely to be harassed and bullied at schools, in schools, by other students and teachers and staff. So, I think that this is an appropriate time to be mindful of those students. And I look forward to this board and this division updating our regulations and policies to be more inclusive of all of our students and our student body and staff as well. And to segue into that, I would still encourage or like to be updated from the division or talk about at this board meeting, how we are updating and how we are following our commitment of the proclamation we made last summer for Black Lives Matter and what the state talks about more about, our anti-racist policies and our equity policies. We spend a lot of time talking about the word equity. And I would like to see similar, if not the same, amount of time that we discussed about sustainability, talking about our anti-racism policies, our transgender update policies, and all of those other controversies, depending on who you're talking to, because they aren't, to me, updates. Because we are a school division that is minority, has more minority students and staff, or more minority students and families than anyone else in this division. And we owe all of them the same and equal amount of time to discuss the things that are important to them, as well as every other student and staff member here as we do when we talk about sustainability, especially to all those who advocate for mental health and safety of our students and staff. Lastly, but not least, is I had the pleasure of attending the Early Identification Programs graduation. We had 29 students from Prince William County participate in EIP, which is a nationally-recognized program, that we participate in addition with a few other Northern Virginia school divisions, as well as George Mason. I myself is an EIP alumni. I just want to make a quick mention for two of the students that spoke, well, former students now. One of our student speaker from Garfield High School, Mina Buhan, spoke at the graduation ceremony. And then I also wanted to give a special shout-out to Rena Alvarado, who participated in the program, I know it's a really bad angle, but she participated as a Prince William County student, then went and graduated from EIP, went to Mason, earned her bachelor's and her master's now, and is the Associate Director of EIP at George Mason University. So, her life has been EIP, and now she continues to give back to all of the students who participate in EIP. And what a wonderful program it is. If you don't know about it, I think highly encourage you to look it up. It's for first-in-the-generation students to be able to be prepared and attend a four-year university upon graduation. We don't spend enough time talking about these students because they do sacrifice not only three weeks in the summer, but weekends and after-school all year long from their eighth-grade year until their 12th-grade year when they graduate. So, sorry for going over time, but I thought it was worthwhile to talk about them. And then if we could get some more information on summer school, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ralston, would you like to add to Board Matters tonight?
Yes. I want to speak. I think it's been an interesting school year. And our students and our teachers and everyone who adapted to what was going on. You know, we did not know it, but we worked through it. So, I want to thank everyone and all those who stayed and fought hard this past year. God bless, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston, Ms. Wall.
So, I'll try to be brief. I am looking forward to graduation, graduations, I should say plural, for the class of 2021. I know I've talked about this a lot lately. I have a 2021 graduate, and I know many, many, many families do as well. I have enjoyed attending Governor's School at Innovation Park graduation so far and a graduation ceremony at Pace West, hoping to attend Patriot, Battlefield, Potomac, and Unity Reed in the coming days. So excited for everybody, such a great accomplishment to see kids achieve this highest honor of being a Prince William County graduate. At Pace West, I wanted to congratulate Heather Klingerman, who won the principal's award there for overcoming challenges, showing resilience in the face of hardship, and just discovering so many wonderful talents that she had. And she's heading off to college, and she was well-deserving of that reward. It was really neat to meet her this last week. Also, a student at Battlefield by the name of Sarah Riggi was in a terrible accident. I just want to say to her and her family that we, the community, is rallying behind her and wish her the speediest recovery for overcoming her accident and hoping that, best wishes for her for graduation and her future plans. I also wanted to say that, stay tuned, we will be seeking input on the SRR3 funds. The use of these funds will be a topic where we will be gathering information from our community, our teacher community, our parent community, our larger communities. So, please stay tuned for information about how you can give us input on how you think these funds should be spent. Thank you to all of our teachers and hard-working staff. I know we have just a little bit of time left, and it's kind of the end of the year where everything's a little bit in chaos and finals are taking place. Just, we appreciate you so very much. We know every single person has contributed in ways that are immeasurable to our effort to maintain a high-quality school division throughout this school year in the face of a pandemic. Lastly, I wanted to congratulate the Battlefield Lacrosse Boys and Girls varsity teams. They are the Cedar Run District Champions, representing the district as the number-one seeds in the 6B Region Tournament because of their wins. And I wish them the best of luck as they advance. And to all of the sports as they're wrapping up, I wish everybody the best of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, Ms. Jackson.
It has been an honor to serve with all the members of the student representatives to the school board. I was very impressed by their commitment, courage, and caring for the betterment of the school system. I love seeing all three of the school student representatives at the events via Zoom and advocating to Senator Warner. The impact that they have made will be generational. Mr. Kim, thank you for your help in gathering student input regarding virtual learning during the naming process. Ms. Menefar, I'm very grateful for your advocacy and the dedication to your school. I know that all three of our members will have a bright future ahead of them. Last meeting, I forgot to thank Brentsville High School, FFA, and Horticulture for their plant sale. The plants I purchased are thriving, and I love seeing the new amazing greenhouse. Yesterday, I was lucky to be invited to the Unity Reed guarding groundbreaking and sunflower planting. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. It was great seeing the students, teachers, parents, and administration. I'm very excited to go back and see the plants that they've grown. I want to thank all Prince William County staff for their amazing work this year. I love seeing all the celebrations, and I'm looking forward to attending some. Speaking of celebration, the wonderful Patriot High School is celebrating their 10th anniversary, and I look forward to going to their kickoff next fall in September, September 10th, to be specific. I'm excited to see the Brentsville District Lions, Patriot Primeers, and Unity Reed Lions walk across the stage in a few days. Congratulations to all graduates. Finally, I want to thank the school system for their message of inclusivity via recognition of Pride Month. This is a time to reflect on the history of the LGBTQ+ community as well as accomplishments. This also a reminder of the importance of inclusion and the responsibility of the school system to strive to ensure all students feel safe, respected, and accepted in their place of learning so that all students have access to world-class education. So, Happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. SpongeBob, would you, I mean?
I know, I'm gonna miss next week, or next meeting is the grand finale, right? Hopefully, of this. First, I look forward to graduations. I will be attending my two high schools, Forest Park and Potomac High School graduations next Saturday, this Saturday, excuse me. Keeping tradition with the last couple meetings, I asked my principals of my two respective buildings to recognize an outstanding senior and give me some feedback at Potomac. Jayron will be graduating this Saturday at the end of his high school career, earning a 3.9 GPA and having completed several Cambridge Project Lead the Way courses, which support his interest in robotics and STEM fields. With the help of Project Lead the Way teacher, Jayron competed in the VEX robotics competition this year and placed in the top 32 of Virginia. He is especially recognized for his work with the Virginia STAR program. STAR, Virginia STAR, provides students interested in engineering and technology by training the students to replace broken laptops which are donated to the school. To date, over 10 Potomac families have received laptops, devices from Potomac's VA STAR program. Jayron returned to onsite in learning at Potomac in April and will continue his educational journey at Virginia Tech next year. Way to go, Jayron. And I just want to make sure he gave me, yes, Jayron Farren. So, I was like, who am I talking, sorry, Jayron, Jayron Farren. Then Potomac, excuse me, Forest Park, Eleanor Seigrist. She is recognized as a Governor's School student and a Forest Park student. She's a member of the robotics team. She participated in the NASA programs offered. She's a Red Ron National Science Competition finalist. She was in the top 40 in the nation. She's also ranked in the top 10 of her class. She's in the running for class valedictorian, and they're awaiting upon finalized grades for class. Principal describes her as a go-getter and well-grounded. In conclusion, also, I was able on Friday last week to do a quick visit of a number of my schools, Forest Park High School, Mary Williams, Henderson, Swans Creek Triangle, and Dumfries Elementary. I'm proud to announce, actually at Dumfries, after a long 20-plus-year wait, the mayor and I and the city council were able, over collaboration, to finally get Dumfries the electronic sign they deserve, like all elementary schools in Prince William County. So, I want to thank Al Chiroki, the Dumfries Councils, Mayor Wood, and that entire team. It's been a mystery where that sign has been located, but we are finally going to give them that electronic sign. So, that's very exciting, and appreciate everyone's time, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Welk. So, very quickly, I really enjoyed the ride on the electric school bus. Here they have a name, Julie 1 and Julie 2, and no one's explained thus far whether, why Julie, but I thought it was kind of cool. So, thank you for that opportunity. I want to thank the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability for all the work that they've been doing. Ashley, Ben, and Caroline, good luck. Thank you for serving on this board, thank you for all of your hard work. And all of the students who have participated by raising their voices and helping each other throughout this entire school year, thank you so much. Let's see. Oh, I did, I got to go to see Pace West's graduation, which was really special. It's a little bit smaller ceremony, very personal. It was beautiful. Looking forward to seeing Independence, Hilton, Patriot, Colgan, and OPHS, and OPHS Osborne Park. And hoping to be able to stop by a couple of the fifth-grade promotion ceremonies. Also had an opportunity to go see Cedar Point's Little Mermaid. It was amazing, that was absolutely fantastic. I see, hopefully, maybe some of those kids will be coming to Colgan in the future. And other than that, I know every week I say, wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance. And I know our guidance is changing, so listen to the guidance, use your best judgment. If you're not feeling well, stay home. Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you for all the hard work that you guys are doing in the school division to protect our students, to educate our students, and to get them across this graduation finish line. And this meeting is now adjourned.